Counsel Edwards?
Motion to seal the minutes.
Second.
Motion been made in second, all those in favor. Counsel Edwards?
Madam President, motion to direct the solicitor to act in accordance with the discussion in executive session.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor. Counselor Perry abstained. He's recused himself.
You got to acknowledge your recusation.
Yeah, I'm recusing myself on the advice of the solicitor.
All right, approval of consent agenda. 1A, approval of regular session meeting minutes of October 10th, 2017. Counselor Perry recused, absent. 2, receipt of minutes from the following boards and commissions. Board of Canvases 11, Economic Development Commission, Tiverton Prevention Coalition, Charter Review Commission Casino Subcommittee. 3, correspondence received and filed ACLU regarding ordinance adoptive regulation of medical marijuana. 4, approval of tax assessor abatements. 5, Treasurer Denise Sarette, September budget and review reports. Would anybody like to remove anything from the consent agenda?
Madam President, motion to approve the consent.
Wait a minute, I'd like to remove 5. CA 5.
Madam President, motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda minus CA 5.
Motion's been made, and do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second, all those in favor. The only reason why I pulled CA 5.
Well, I wasn't here for this, so I'm just...
Yeah, so you can approve the rest, Joe, if you'd like. I just want to draw everyone's attention to the police overtime. The original budget was 210,000. The balance is 140. I'm a little concerned of what we've spent up to this. We've only gone into this for three to four months, well, three months, actually. And we're almost at half. So I just wanted to bring that attention and ask the town administrator to please keep a close eye on this.
I will.
Okay.
I can say that as of, overtime is going down now that we brought in the extra policemen.
All right, because I'm just worried, we're only three months into it. If you times this by four, we cannot do that, so. I make a motion to approve CA 5.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor. Unanimous. Open public forum announcements, comments, and questions. John Reed, Stonebridge Lighting, I believe, Mr. Reed, you were here last week?
Yes, I can come back though.
You can, but only a five-minute discussion?
Oh, I'll be less than that.
Okay.
I wanted to thank you for introducing me to Brett Pelletier. He and I had a very fruitful conversation. Obviously, a great deal of thought and effort has gone into all the planning. There was a different Stonebridge committee from the other Stonebridge committee that I've seen online, and obviously, they've given him a lot of attention. I did send copies of my correspondence to each of the counselors. I do think there are two issues that I hope can get further attention before it's ultimately implemented, and one would be to restrain with regard to the lighting at the very end of the apartment, where people will tend to go most likely to see the star in the skies and the water, and so that it was a sequence of lights, perhaps that stopped before we get, before you get to the end, as mapped out on the plan now. They go seven in a row, right to the very tip of the apartment. And the second is that the drawing suggests that it's 15 to 20 feet high. Mr. Pelletier says, in fact, it should be closer to 10. I didn't see that spec, but I hope that it's implemented that way. But I would also hope that if time allows and how circumstances develop, that consideration be given to lower-level lighting rather than the higher-level lighting, that lights, kind of a bollard light and filled lights for pedestrians, as opposed to lighting up a whole pier-like boardwalk kind of situation. But I appreciate the consideration Mr. Pelletier gave, and if it's time to think and talk about it again in the future, perhaps that will arise. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Kemp, play equipment at Grinnell Beach.
Good evening. My name is John.
I'd like to give your address, and your address, please.
21 Riverside Drive.
Okay. You can take a seat if you like.
Well, thank you very much. I'm an old kid who likes to swing, and that's why I'm here. I first want to applaud you on a tremendous job that you have done with the Recreation Committee to get a half a million-dollar grant for the town for Grinnell Beach improvements. And I was at Potties, and the ladies were talking about it. It was mothers and grandmothers, and they were shocked. What do you mean there's not going to be a playground? A half a million dollars later. So I did not read the fine print that said, "Demo the playground." And others like me, who may have read it, thought, oh, okay, they're going to bulldoze the beach, and surely, they're going to put the play equipment back. So that's where we are, and I totally, completely agree with the Recreation Committee and the Town Council that $50,000 is way too much money to spend for a big, old, plastic, what they call them now, playground package. The least expensive starts usually around $20,000, to which you add another $30,000 for the professional installation, et cetera, et cetera, and you get 50 and on up. So I think that's out of the question on a beach that is zoned flood and has velocity hurricane issues and floods. Does anyone know how many times it's flooded in, like, the last 50 years?
No, I don't.
Two, three, whatever. Anyway, what I think, and actually, it was Tricia Hilton who said, "Phase one is over, but what about phase two?"
Did you go to the Recreation Committee?
No, I spoke with hers, but with Brett. Brett is in favor of the playground equipment, too, but only if it's the small, like a swing set, see-through, that does not interfere. You did such a great job to have that wonderful vision knocking down the garage. So you have a vision of sea and sky and the vista and a natural setting. This is the town center for Tiverton, and so there should not be really anything that obstructs the view. The other thing that I was most impressed with is how you were able to go through CRMC and get, navigate through all those channels and get permission to keep, to get a holding tag. I mean, that is tremendous. So I believe in the council, I believe in the Recreation Committee. I believe that you can do anything that you set your mind to. And I've been around enough to know that if a town doesn't want to do something, they raise liability issues, they raise high costs, they raise insurance. But if you want it, if you want some inexpensive playground equipment that meets all safety national codes, such as the ADA, the ASTN, the CPSC, which is Consumer Products, I talked with PlayCorp, BYO, which is the largest manufacturer of play commercial equipment in the United States. And for $1,386, you get a four-swing set that is lifetime warranty, whatever lifetime means. It has corrosive, saltwater-resistant, all those things that are so important on a beach that could be inundated with saltwater. And your investment is not big, but you've made a lot of kids happy, a lot of parents, a lot of grandparents, at very low affordable cost. Grinnell Beach has a history of being a family-oriented playground, and I do believe that when you say, "Oh, they can go play someplace else. Send them down to Fogland Beach." This is our town center. Just like you're going to get the volleyball court back, I think restoring the playground equipment, a swing set, and a simple climbing platform is critical.
Mrs. Kemp, it's been five minutes. I do want to tell you that this is, that you really need to go to the Recreation Committee, because that's the place you need to go.
Okay, how do I do that?
Nancy will help you, the clerk will help you. You are supposed to be on their agenda, and you can go speak to them. There are a lot of rules and regulations that are made up because we don't want to do it. So they need to be your first, first people to do it, because in order to do it, we have to find the money. And if it has anything to do with raising money, then the Recreation Committee will be the first place that you should stop.
I want to salute you for, you've got a 35% beach increase, which is plenty of room for a swing set and a slide. We have 1,800 square feet for a volleyball court, 1,800 square feet.
This is the argument you need to make with the Recreation Committee. And that if they want to do this, then they come to us. Okay? All right, thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
I'll be more than happy to help you raise the money.
And I have nominations.
And Randy will help you.
Already of $2,500.
Perfect.
That would be like for the first, but more than pay for the swing.
Well, I'm sure the Recreation Committee will really hope that you help them, and I'm sure they'll be enthusiastic about this.
Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Public hearings, advertise public hearings, CDBG, 2017 grand application for a public hearing. Is anyone here? I don't think so.
Yeah, I believe that the representative from Community Church was supposed to be here, and he is not.
All right, so we'll move on if he does show up. We'll go back to that. Appointments and resignation, Budget Committee, applications to date. There are three vacancies to the next general election, November 2018. There are five applicants, Michael C. Dakotas, 19 Louise Drive, Jennifer Jocelyn, 122 Russell Drive, David J. Paul, 175 Warren Avenue, John A. Perkins Jr., 61 Peaceful Way, Carolyn Wyman, 26 Ronnie Street. The way I'm going to run this is everyone, everyone give me your nominations. The first person nominated will be the first person we'll vote on, and we'll go from there. I'd like to start the nomination process.
Madam President.
Counsel Edwards.
Mike Dakotas.
Madam President.
Do we need a second?
Wait a minute, yeah. So I have, yep, I have a motion for Michael C. Dakotas. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, oh, okay, next.
Jennifer Jocelyn?
Joan is actually the next one.
That's okay.
All right.
And I'll second that.
All right, so I have a motion for Jennifer Jocelyn and a second. Anyone else?
David, David Paul.
I have a motion for David Paul, and I have a second. Trish Hilton?
Madam President, I'd like to nominate John Perkins.
I have a motion for John Perkins and a second. Anyone else?
Yeah, Madam President, I'd like to nominate Carolyn Wyman.
I have a motion for Carolyn Wyman, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Carolyn Wyman. The first nomination was Michael C. Dakotas. I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Four opposed? Oh, did, all right, six.
You missed all these.
I didn't see you. Opposed? Trish, do you abstain?
I'm going to abstain.
So six for Mike and one opposed. One abstain. One abstention. The next will be Jennifer Jocelyn. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. I have a motion for David J. Paul and a second. All those in favor? Five opposed. Two. I have my four, no, I have my three. Congratulations to the people nominated, to the people that applied. Thank you for applying, and please look for other opportunities, because there's a lot of other committees that need your help. Thank you. Housing Authority, one vacancy, must be a resident. Five-year term, October 15, 2022. There is one applicant who is seeking reappointment. Sister M. Michaelinda Plant, RSM, 99 Hancock Street. Because she's the only applicant, we can waive our policy, is that correct?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to waive our policy?
Madam President, motion to waive our policy.
Do I have a, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor to waive the policy? Unanimous. I like, next motion for Sister M. Michaelinda Plant.
Madam President, make a motion to appoint Sister M. Michaelinda Plant.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Unanimous. Historic Preservation Board, three-year term, 10/15/2020. One applicant, Stuart Hardy, 52 Summerfield Lane. He is seeking reappointment. I'd like a motion to waive our policy.
Madam President, motion to waive the policy.
Second.
Question?
Yes, Joe, discussion.
Is that the only vacancy there is? Is there only one vacancy?
I believe.
There's another one.
Nancy? There is another one.
This is for a reappointment.
This is for a reappointment. All right, so I have a motion to waive our policy and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. I'd like a motion to appoint Stuart Hardy.
Madam President, motion to reappoint Stuart Hardy.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Unanimous.
No, I abstain.
And one abstention. I'm sorry, Randy, I thought your hand was up. Personnel Board, four-year term, 10/15/2021. James M. Camara, 1221 Crandall Road, seeking reappointment. Like a motion to waive our policy?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to reappoint James M. Camara.
First, we have to waive the policy, Joe.
I'll make a motion to waive the policy. And you'll second me, Joe.
Obviously, Joe's seconded. Motion's been made in second. Now, Joe.
I'll make a motion to appoint James M. Camara.
Oh, all those in favor, I'm sorry to waive the policy. Joe, you screwed me up. All right.
Didn't take much.
All right, go ahead, Joe.
All right, I'll make a motion to reappoint James M. Camara to the Recreation, the Personnel Board.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Tax Assessment Board, a review, two vacancies, three-year term, 10/15/2020. Kathleen G. Skrupjak, 230 Curran's Avenue, seeking reappointment. Like, entertain a motion to waive our policy?
Madam President, motion to waive our policy.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Go ahead, John.
Madam President, motion to reappoint Kathleen G. Skrupjak.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, all those in favor? Unanimous. Unfinished Business Town Administrator. Updated draft input of proposed charter changes.
Thank you, Madam President. No decision required here, but we have scheduled 6 November as the special session to discuss charter review inputs. And what I encourage the counselor to do between now and then is less, if you have any sort of administrative or editorial changes you want to be done in the charter, please send them to me, and I'll incorporate them in this document. But I really hope you will focus on policy issues. And I think probably the major policy issue, not necessarily exclusively, but the major policy issue is the use of casino money when it comes in. So that'll certainly be an item on the agenda for discussion. Your attention is drawn to the last item in here, and this is since I've made editorial changes, and we'll have an update for you next, around the 6th as well. And I've asked the solicitor to be reviewing these prior to that time, so at least we have a legal review to talk about. So, no action at this point, just more to come.
And the Casino Committee, which is discussing the money for the casino, and we are planning on coming to the Town Council very shortly, probably the first meeting in December, to tell you everything we've, we are recommending.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would suggest that Town Administrator, you might want to also put this on the Casino Subcommittee agenda as well, because we're going to meet, the Subcommittee will meet before the next meeting.
Your next meeting is the 8th. I think your next meeting is the 8th of November.
It is.
So you'll actually have, the 8th of November have the benefit of the council's special session on the 6th.
Okay.
Any other discussion or questions? Town Administrator approval of ASME reorganization plan.
So requesting approval of the one-page summary you see as part of the development of a combined planning, zoning, building department, we need to rearrange our administrative support here in Town Hall without actually having to go out and hire a new position, or fill a new position, or hire a new person. So we have reviewed this with our solicitor and with the labor attorney, and we think we have a plan here to move some functions to the Police Department, namely the Municipal Records, to be able to use, take advantage of a planned retirement, and move some functions around, and the Town Clerk is able to consolidate some of her functions into three positions as opposed to recurrent four, by moving, principally by moving the Municipal Court Records function. So we can do this upon your approval with no fiscal impact, and we do, we have briefed the union on this, and they are supportive.
And Nancy, I assume you've reviewed this, and this is all to your approval? Because this does affect you.
It does, but I think it's cooperation what needs to be done. The only change I would say, as opposed to no fiscal, minimal fiscal, in fact, just in case we need some seasonal work.
Nancy's a little more conservative, I think. Well, it'd be minimal if any.
Be very minimal.
Any other questions? Counselor Hilton?
I have a question. So, just to make sure that I've got this right. Nancy's giving up a full-time person? Who's going to go to the Building Officials' Office?
No.
Okay.
I'm giving, what's happening is the Municipal Court function.
Right, is going to the Police Department.
Which is half of a position in my office will be transferring to the, will call, may be transferring to the Police Department with the funds that carry that half position.
Correct.
And then the other half of that position. So I'm, I'm losing a full position, but I'm only losing a half as far as workload in there once Municipal Court.
Okay, I think that that's what threw me, because this says, "Transfer 16K funding light item from the Building Department to the Police Department."
That's correct.
But if Nancy's transferring her half a person and the funding that goes with it.
She's not transferring any funding. For the part-time record. She will be transferring funding for the FTE that eventually becomes the Land Use Clerk.
All right, explain this again, you lost me.
Now, you lost me.
So there's currently 16,000 for a part-time clerk in the Building Office.
I get it now, go ahead.
That's just been sitting there doing nothing for the last three, four months. When the Records Clerk function goes over to the Police Station, that money would transfer from Building to the Police, and the Police would be made whole.
Right, I get it.
Now I understand, sorry.
No, it's when you said that 16K is when I got it, because that's been sitting there. Any other questions?
Madam President.
Counsel Edwards?
I guess I have a question for the solicitor and/or administrator. Is this proposal to effectively move that money now if we approved this? And would we not need a separate fiscal business item to move that money?
We would.
We would, because this won't happen instantaneously. We've, there's some timing issues, namely, the original person who is expected to retire, so that has to be, so there's some timing issues. This won't happen tomorrow.
So I think the answer is, John, is they're not quite sure what the figure is they want to transfer yet, until they figure out all the pieces. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So we're approving the outline, and we'll approve the actual process when you have details.
Each one will probably come iteratively.
Any other questions? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Madam President, motion to approve the ASME reorganization plan.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Did you have further discussion?
No, I'm just not going for it.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Six, one. Town Administrator approval to hire a land use administrator?
Yes, so this is a carryover from our discussion from last session, and we just did not have this description ready for the last session. So it is ready now, and request permission to post and hire.
Any questions or discussion?
Madam President.
Yes, Randy?
I'm not going to drag it out. I just want everybody to know that I am 100% against this. I have been right from the beginning. This is adding red tape to the town to anything you want to get done. You're adding too many chiefs. We've got enough chiefs. So I'll, I just want to be on the record. That's why I went against this, and I go against this.
And it's been explained before why this isn't, but I respect your opinion.
Yeah, I think we need a planner. We have almost, this puzzle almost finished. We need a planner. We don't need any of this stuff. We got a, we got a Building Department now, we have a DPW Director, we got a Fire Chief, we got a new Chief of Police coming in, sorry, Chief. We need a planner.
He's glad to go.
We need, that's it, we need a planner. And then we can have this town, we'll be successful. This is just not my cup of tea doing this way. And it's just one vote, and that's just the way I feel about it.
Thank you, Counsel LeBeau. Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Yes.
I also want to go on the record saying that I proposed to this, I voted against it moving forward in the first place, and I still don't think that the town has done enough homework to move forward with putting a position out to bid.
Any other discussion?
Madam President.
Counsel Shabat?
Based upon our discussion at the special meeting we had on this topic, what I proposed was, excuse me, what I proposed was a land use official as well as a administrative officer as part of this position. I did not contemplate this position to have management responsibilities, because then that becomes a three-part job rather than a two-part job, because we wanted this person to focus, certainly to address a critical issue of having an administrative officer, and then following that with a land use official. And in my mind, our focus was on those two responsibilities. And now, this is adding a third responsibility, a management responsibility. And I think that was not what I signed up for or voted for the last time.
Mr. McGee, would you like to address that?
Well, let me, my question, what, what language in here, and I think maybe you're looking at the managed assigned workload, but is there other language in here that we can maybe strike? Because that's exactly how this was designed, to be a, the zoning and administrative officer. The only management envisioned is that there are two clerks in the office, and they may require, you know, supervision at any given moment. Is there any, what is the, what is the flavor in the language that is?
I think it was a combination of what's in here and then what is also proposed in your charter review document.
Any other discussion? Questions?
Madam President, we're going to take a look at the charter review document and work on, so if what Joan is suggesting, that's also an issue, we probably should, they should both go forward at the same time. Unless it's, unless it's just a little bit in the charter review.
Well, quite frankly, we need an administrator officer yesterday, so I don't know if we want to wait until we do the charter review committee.
Well, certainly if there's.
Can we do it separately?
Well, that's, that's what we're proposing. I mean, the language that you're reading of the Land Use Department is just proposal, and certainly subject to your edits at the, at the special session next, next month.
I was just referring to what Joan was saying, that it was also in this.
But this is a proposal, this isn't really written in stone. The charter, the charter revisions.
Yes. Is this something we can postpone and review this a little more in depth before we make a decision tonight?
Well, like I said, the Planning Office really needs help, and they need an administrator officer. We all listened to Sue Gill the other day, and she's done this for a lot more time than she volunteered for. I read this, and to be quite frank with you, I thought this is what we agreed to. I didn't have a problem with it. I, I don't know why, I just didn't feel surprised by this. This is what I felt was what we all agreed to. I don't know if we can wait. I quite frankly don't feel we can, but I, of course... But of course, if the majority, if you want to wait, we will wait. Councilor Hilton want to say one more thing?
Madam President, this is pretty much exactly what I expected, the one thing in here. And not that I'm surprised by it, but as far as management responsibilities, and it doesn't actually say it's manage, it says supervises clerical support activities. I don't know that it makes a difference in terms of this particular job description and being able to go out to advertise for this, in the end, who technically the part-time clerk reports to. It does make sense that the part-time clerk would be supervised in some way, shape or form by this person, whether or not they're their actual manager and have to write an evaluation or something like that. But, so, you know, that is to me the only thing that's in here. But I did expect that they'd be supervising the part-time clerk somewhat. And frankly, I feel like when we asked Susan Gill to step in as administrative officer in, was that April, I believe? And now it is the end of October and we're just getting to the point of voting on a job description so that the Town Administrator can go out to advertise on this. I really don't feel like, you know, I'm just even surprised frankly that Susan is a volunteer who's been willing to do it this long. I think that we should do this. It's a job description that lets us go out to advertise. And if there's a concern about technically who's managing the part-time clerk, we can certainly address that.
We can always tweak this as we go along. You know, once the person gets here, responsibilities do change.
Through the interview process, we can, you know, narrow down what we're looking for. But it's always envisioned, and this is to Councilor LeBeau's point, it's always envisioned that the Director of this Department will be the planner. And that's the person who have ultimate managerial over this department. In the interim, it'll be me, because there is no planner. There is no Director of this department. So the current Building Official and this new Land Use Administrator will report directly to me. So managerial issues will ultimately fall on my desk.
Madam President? Yeah, okay, so I'm fine, I'm fine with this, because I, you know, we do have to go forward and try to relieve Susan. And then if we need to go over stuff on the Charter Revision, that's fine, we can, it sounds like we can separate it out easily. So I'm fine with that, to move this forward.
Any other discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Can we just change this, throw this document over there in the shredder and hire a planner?
Well, we talked about that, Randy, and there was several reasons given during the workshop why that was not feasible at this time.
But we're hiring somebody, we're hiring another.
This person is also going to help Neil.
Right, but the problem is, we don't need another chief, we need a planner. We have enough chiefs in this town. We need a Town Planner, not all of this. This is just, this is just a waste. If we just go out, let's try to get a planner. Let's spend some money and try to get a planner instead of this. Just my opinion.
Any other further discussion? Councilor Shabbat?
Just a question for the Town Administrator. We have one clerk in there today.
Yes.
Who does that person report to?
Currently, to Neil, to the Building Official.
Well, that's what, that's what I was thinking too, that this clerk would have to report to the Building Official also, because we'll be working over there with him.
If the clerk showed up today, if that person actually started today, since Neil's the only one standing, he would be the one to report to. But the division of labor, if there's, if the Administrator, the Land Use Administrator and the Land Use Clerk showed up today, we would divide the duties up based on what they need to be between planning, zoning, and building, and the administrative support to the Planning Board.
Who reports to this person?
What, which person?
The person you're trying to hire here.
The Administrator? Any given moment, no one. Or if the need be, the Land Use Clerk.
So is this new person going to be responsible for what Bill does? Is he going to be responsible for what the Building Inspector does? I mean, who's this guy, what do we need him for? What's his job? What's his purpose?
We discussed this before though, but go ahead, Paul, if you want to explain it briefly.
I just don't get it.
No, the Land Use Administrator will not work for Neil. Neil's, the zoning, the code enforcement functions that the Building Inspector is doing will fall under this person in addition to the task of the Administrative Officer, which is embedded in this job description.
So this person's going to be Neil's boss?
No, it'll be his co-equal.
It'll be equal.
I say we need a planner.
Any other discussion? I'd like to entertain a motion, please.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the job description as submitted for the Land Use Administrator.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Four against? Three. Thank you. There's no financial business? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Perry and, I was trying to go right over yous. Councilor Perry and Hilton, Board and Commissions' policy proposed amendments. Whoever would like to start?
You did all the language.
Well, one of you better.
So Councilor Perry and I spent a little time looking at the Boards and Commissions' and Committees' policy. In light of the fact that the town is incredibly dependent on its volunteers to do, to do the work that needs to be done. And if we had to replace the volunteers with employees, it would be extraordinarily expensive. But at the same time, the process of coming to the Council or applying to be on a Board or Commission seems to be a little confusing and sometimes overwhelming for folks. Things don't seem to be, if you're not sitting up here and you're sitting on the other side, sometimes it seems as though the rules are rather Byzantine and it's hard to tell how you approach this. We also took some feedbacks from some other Board and Committee members. Both Councilor Perry and I have had the experience of being on, serving on Boards and Commissions as well. So we took the existing policy and are suggesting some revisions here, which you'll see in First of all, in, under organization, there's, you'll notice in red that it refers to standing Boards or Committees. We have a rule in the Charter that says a person may not serve on more than one Board or Committee. But that refers to the Committees that are in the Charter. And we have lots of other ad hoc Committees and special Committees where multiple people serve on multiple things. So we just want to clarify that in general, these are the standing regular Committees. One thing to note here, and the Council will need to decide it, is that the Litter Committee, which we created, isn't on this list anywhere. So someone needs to decide which group to put the Litter Committee into. Because they should become, be listed as a standing committee. In January, Madam President?
Is it just getting organized? I mean, they've been organized, but they're just.
They're reorganized.
The next change is to Board Organization. And it just occurred to me, on Nancy's copy, for some reason, I'm not sure why this says this, on the Board Organization, we're recommending that no member served as Chair of a Committee for more than six years, provided there's another candidate willing to serve. In the past, there's been a recommendation, and I'm not sure why it, when this printed out, it's not on your copy, which was that no member served for more than six years on a Committee, unless there weren't other volunteers. We didn't really think that that was a very.
Good thing to keep in there.
Good thing. I mean, we're very dependent on the volunteers. We have long-serving volunteers who've been on and worked for way more than six years. And why would we possibly want to get rid of them if they're willing to continue serving? But we did discuss.
Well, if they're doing a good job, yes.
If they're doing a good job. But we did discuss the possibility of asking Chairs to rotate so that maybe someone else could have a turn. It's a good idea, it brings fresh ideas, it brings fresh blood. Sometimes Boards and Committees can get a little bit stale. Somebody's been Chair for a long time and I've been a Board Chair, I know how this feels. You start off and you're very enthusiastic, and then as time goes on, you're thinking, oh, I got to post that agenda again. So not that someone couldn't be a Chair again in the future, but if there's someone else who's willing to serve, that Chair's not served more than six years. Next recommendation was that the Vice Chair be authorized to post agendas and schedule meetings. Sometimes Chairs are a little particular about that. And we have Boards and Commissions that occasionally don't have meetings or can't get a meeting because for whatever reason, the Chair can't get one scheduled. So the Vice Chair should be authorized to do that and have the same access to the Rhode Island Secretary of State, open meetings portals so that they can post things. A lot of Boards and Commissions already do that. I know the Planning Board for one does it. I know that there are many. I think it should just be a standard thing across the Board.
Board meetings?
Board meetings. Joe, why don't you take over for a little bit here?
Yeah, Board Meetings are expected to conduct themselves in a professional and respectful manner at all times during meetings. That was never in there, so we wanted to put that in there so, you know, Board Members would remember that, you know, they're representing the town. Then we go down to, under Board Members also, there's a note, for a Board with a regular monthly meeting scheduled, any member of an appointed Board, Commission or Committee who does not attend at least six, sixty-six?
Yeah.
And two, sixty-six and two-thirds, or two-thirds of the regularly scheduled meetings, said Board, Commission, Committee or Agency during one year shall be considered removed from such a Board. And we felt that that was kind of a little harsh. We felt that if somebody missed like four or five meetings in a row or six, then they should be considered to be dismissed from that Board. But sometimes unforeseen, seeing things come up and you might miss two meetings because of the way they're scheduled, that they shouldn't necessarily be.
So did you change that?
Yeah. Yeah, that's one of the recommendations that we're making.
Okay.
Is that it should be, because it was saying if they missed two meetings in a row, they were off. And we're saying that it should be sixty-six and two-thirds for the year.
Got you, all right.
Which translates into if it's a Board or Commission that has a monthly meeting, then you need to make, I don't know how you do the math on this, Tony, 7.9, not two meetings, but.
Actually, I have a comment. And I'm sorry about that, the math is correct, 7.992. However, when you say one-year period, you might want to specify if it's on an annual basis or on a fiscal year basis.
So January, January.
Because the question can be, you know, one-year period, it goes from one year to the next.
How about calendar year?
Yeah, calendar year.
So put calendar in there?
Because some Commissions meet twice a month, some only meet once.
Yeah.
Nancy? Perhaps you could also add the clerk in there for notification, because I'm going around in a circle here, who's the Chairs, who's the Vice Chairs, who's going to be removed or whatever. And we have the active listing for the Boards and Commissions.
So where would you like that?
So as opposed to copy to the Town Council, you just copy the Town Clerk, it'll get to the Town Council.
So.
Okay.
And that way I'm not out of that mood of who, because they should be, sometimes it's years before I find out who was re-elected as a Chair. I can't keep tracking these, they have to come to us. So maybe you could just put the Town Clerk in there on the notifications too.
All right.
And then the next one was minutes. Seems like a lot of times we don't get minutes from Boards for like six, seven, eight months or a year later. So we added in there that meeting minutes shall generally be available and submitted to the Town Council within three months of the meeting date. I don't think that's impossible for somebody to accomplish, because, you know, like, I think a while back, we got meetings for a whole year.
As far as the Secretary of State? No, I didn't think so.
Yeah, actually, you might want to reference the Open Meetings Act, which has its own timetable for minutes, but I didn't read this to be for that. That was just forwarded to the Town Council.
All right, but they do have to do their minutes monthly.
Correct, yes.
So that's what makes this confusing.
So the, when we tried to figure this out, because different, I mean, different, I know the rules are changing in January. If you're, the Secretary of State, open meeting laws have different things, if you're an Advisory Board versus whatever. We just, the minutes that come here, the way we came to three months is, if you're a Board that meets once a month, if you meet in January, you don't approve your minutes until February.
Right.
But having been on a.
How can you produce?
Right, Board or Commission, lots of times, the meeting, sometimes the Secretary doesn't have the meeting minutes for the next month, so it isn't until the third month that you actually can approve them and send them to the Council. So that's why we came up with three months.
Three months, right.
And send them to the Council.
All right.
All right, then the last one, I'll let you take care of, Trish. Reporting.
Reporting.
Because that's the one, you made the change.
So we had this discussion about this reporting, and the Boards and Commissions are all supposed to be reporting to us. And it happened in January and April and July, and that barely happens. We've never actually, this Council, but even when I was on the Conservation Commission, no one made us report. Occasionally, somebody did, but it's like this set of regulations that nobody does and nobody enforces. And frankly, folks are volunteers, so asking them to write up a big report of their annual activities and then come and present it is kind of, you know, especially because we have their minutes. So if we read their minutes every month, we kind of know what they're doing. Instead, we thought might, what might be helpful was to annually submit, either in December, January, a list of goals or objectives or priority projects for the upcoming calendar year. So in other words, whatever the Board or Commission decides they want to work on, to let the Council know and the Town Administrator know, in case there's something that we might want to ask them to change, or we might say, gee, we were hoping you'd make this a priority or whatever it is. Not anything longer detailed, just a bulleted list of priorities. And it also would give us an opportunity in budget season, if somebody has a project that we're especially enthusiastic about and they need a little funding, extra funding for it, we'll understand why. So that was really the, that was really the request, is a short list to go to the Town Administrator or to the Town Council through the Town Administrator. And.
Can you just have a question on that? Really quickly. So the question I had is, do we want to include quasi-judicial Boards, like the zoning Board, as far as giving us goals and objectives for, you know, what the Board is? I mean, they just kind of take it in stride and whatever comes before them, they deal with?
I mean, they may not have any, but they may have a, they may decide that they want to work on their own, they want to have a policy on something, or they may want to change a procedural thing, the way they work with the Building Official's Office. I mean, they might not have a lot, but I think they should have the opportunity, you know, to say, we'd like to do something a little different this year. And lastly, there is a, there is this thing that has existed that, again, going back to Nancy, the Chair shall also notice, notify the Administrator of every member who is absent for more than the one-third, the thirty-three and one-third. So in other words, that would be the time at the end of the calendar year that a Board Chair might say, well, you know, this particular member didn't attend, you know.
Two-thirds.
Didn't attend their sixty-six and two-thirds of regularly scheduled meetings. The next change is, we. Then, the next change is, we have this appointment schedule, but we're also suggesting that, and I think this happens now, we're just putting it in writing, that if there's an unfilled slot on a border commission, just because the appointment schedule says March, the town clerk should keep advertising it until it gets filled. Okay, now to the good part, the appointments.
Reappointments.
The reappointments, and the appointments. Okay. Okay. So, the thought on changing this was that if we have one system and it's the same all the time, that this will be a friendlier process for volunteers. I can look at some recent appointments, I can look at what happened with economic development commission and we kept taking applicants and kept taking applicants and it got dragged out forever and then the night of the appointments, it was chaos. I can think of other appointments that have been like this. I've had people say to me that it feels like, because they don't understand what's happening, that the town council is looking for better candidates. It feels insulting that they don't understand why some people get appointed the night that they interview, other people don't, sometimes the policy gets waived. It's just, we're used to it, but to the average volunteer who hasn't done this before, it just seems Byzantine and very unfriendly and intimidating. We need people to volunteer. So, the suggestion is that, that as far as, and this is where we got rid of the, under reappointments, generally encouraged to limit their service thing. And instead, we deleted most of that paragraph and it just says, "Reappointments are not guaranteed and shall follow the procedure outlined in section G below." For the advertisement and public notice, the suggestion is that the advertisement includes an application deadline. That's it, either your application is in by then or it's not considered for this particular round and dates of town council interviews. So that the town clerk, Nancy's shaking her head, she doesn't like this idea.
Those dates are gonna be a problem, okay?
The deadlines, dates are gonna be a problem.
Well, the thought was that if the application deadline is, I'll make something up, May first, then the interview dates would be published, the next two council meetings after a, whatever the next two regularly scheduled council meetings are, after May first, those are the interview dates. So, you know going into this, when you put an application in, that these are the two dates that interviews are being held. You either make it or you don't, that's it, but people know ahead of time. If everybody takes the first date, the first week, then they're all on that first one. But sometimes people can't make one. So, there'd be two dates, the next two regularly scheduled meetings, and that be in the advertisement. There's a.
You want that in the advertisement, that's gonna be difficult.
Yeah.
But I'll try it, we'll see where it goes. I have to tell you, if the deadline is May first and I walk in here with an application on May second, because I just found out about it, because I don't get this kind of times. Are you telling me you don't want that person included at all, even though it may be a needed position? Because I put the advertising out there and it said, May first.
What the intent was, was because people come before us for an appointment and then we say, okay, next meeting we'll appoint. And then the next meeting, somebody else comes, now we say, okay, the next meeting we'll appoint. And then, somebody else comes and now, these people that applied the first time, they're getting discouraged because they haven't heard anything, they think that they're not in the running anymore. So, they just say, okay. But if we set up something where we have a system where we know that two interviews by the third council meeting, we're going to appoint, there was a deadline, then at least the people will be informed and they'll know that I should hear something by this date, one way or the other.
Well, I'm gonna follow what you have, I'm just saying, it's gonna be difficult when someone walks in the day after. Well, I didn't know, so-and-so just told me and I'm bringing in an application. We've got an opening and we're not gonna put that person on.
You know, what do we do like for a job application, when the deadline is at three? I understand that, but when we have a deadline, it's not the idea of paying, it's the idea that people get frustrated because they put it in in time and now they're being kicked down the road, two months, three months, and there's no appointment and so they get discouraged and they say, I'm not interested anymore. Or I haven't heard anything, so I guess I'm not in the running. And that's what we're just trying to avoid. And this, this is just proposals, I mean, this is not carved in stone. If somebody has a better idea, that's fine, we're just trying to do something where we're consistent, we have some kind of policies so that we can go by.
Suppose, suppose there's no applicants at all, by May first and then May second, someone walks into the, that's what I think Nancy's saying. And somebody walked into Nancy's office and says they have an application, does Nancy have to re-advertise?
Couldn't we, if we had a meeting on May first and she said there are no applications, couldn't we make a motion that night to say, okay, let's extend the deadline period?
We'd have to re-advertise.
Okay.
Which is.
Just so you know, that's what's gonna happen.
But speaking of people knowing these things, not everybody reads the legal notices in the Secan at times. I know that Tom Daglishing said surprising. But in this day and age, there are a lot of other ways to get the message out. And I've thought for a while that it would be very useful for the town to have a Facebook page. Not the kind of page for posting and posting comments or any of that, you shut the comments off. But a Facebook page that basically had the same sort of stuff that we post on the homepage of the website, announcements, things like that. And I think if you had, for example, posted the board and commission openings on Facebook, because there are a lot of people who are out there and there are people who follow these pages, I'd be, I'll bet you, you'd reach a whole segment of the population that we're not reaching right now that, you know, like to learn about things in the world digitally. And I'm strongly gonna suggest we consider having something like that and include these announcements for volunteers there.
I agree, just from the point of view, you'd be reaching another segment and another generation.
What about Twitter?
Twitter?
Well. I'm good with that as long as Nancy wants, as long as Nancy wants to manage the town's Twitter account.
Look at Leo. I think we'll start a Facebook and then go further. Yeah, Paul?
Okay, well, I see where you go. I will certainly follow this. Although, I don't think it's necessary to put a lot of the interviews in a ad to get volunteers. I think we can perform it when the application comes in, that it's definitely the next two.
Okay. We were just trying to make your life easy in case you couldn't reach these folks so that they just, you know, they've been told. So, if you don't want that, but we thought that'd make your life easier. Applications shall be completed and submitted to the town clerk prior to the advertised deadline. On the next page, we talked about, as a general rule, no person shall be appointed to serve concurrently on more than one and we inserted standing committee, because we already have that situation going on at every place. And just to clarify, we added language that says, "This provision shall not apply to individuals named to special ad hoc or other advisory groups created by the council for the purposes of addressing a specific meter project and which is expected to be sunset at the completion of their purpose. Applicants currently serving on another border commission shall indicate such service on the application form." Okay, on page eight. "We substituted under normal circumstances and went, except for emergency purposes, the town council will not consider nominations or make appointments until the meeting following the meeting that all interviews have been concluded."
Conducted.
Or conducted, sorry. Provided an application has been submitted prior to the published deadline, individuals seeking reappointment shall be given first consideration and the president shall ask if there's a council nomination for the applicant. So, there are two things here. One is that the standard policy is, unless it's an emergency, we won't do the waiving thing. Not because we don't understand it, but because to the general public, it's very complicated as to whose nominations get waived when.
Even a reappointment that doesn't have anyone else?
Hang on a second.
Alright.
Go ahead, Joe.
Except for the reappointment.
So.
Anybody being reappointed, it would come before the council first. And if any council member had an objection to them being reappointed or a comment to them why they should or a commandment, why they should be reappointed, then we would address that then.
If Tony concurs with this, if you follow the logic here, because for reappointments, it says that interviews are recommended but not required. So, if you've got a reappointment, what we're also suggesting, because this is another sort of sensitive subject, is that if you've got a reappointment and then you've got upper applicants for the same, for that seat, that the courteous thing to do is that somebody who's seeking reappointment is entitled to an up or down vote or at least the option for nomination. It shouldn't be this political thing where somebody comes expecting they might be reappointed and it's a hurry to nominate people. It's just not the best way to treat somebody who's been a volunteer. So that, as the process goes along, if there's someone seeking reappointment and there are other people seeking that same seat, that a person seeking reappointment should be given first consideration. The president should ask if there are nominations. If there are none, there are none and maybe there aren't any. But, but at least that way, we get away from this, you know.
I don't agree with that.
Yeah, I disagree with that.
I disagree with that. Right, no, I think that, I don't think we should re, I think a reappointment should be interviewed, but I think that everybody else should be interviewed also before making the decision on the reappointment.
Oh, no, you should. I guess what, maybe this isn't clear.
This sounds like, like when you, when they want to be reappointed, we could actually reappoint them without considering anyone else.
Oh, no, that was, if it's worded that way, that wasn't the intention.
That's the way I took it.
Okay.
Is that how you guys are taking it? Yeah, Joan did, yeah. Yeah, it's like, so, say Sally was on, Sally, I'm using you right now on recreation and a lot of the people applied for her position. If Sally applies, then somebody could make a motion just to appoint Sally without interviewing anyone else. That's what this makes this sound like.
That wasn't.
The reappointment was that, the reappointing person usually doesn't come before us because they were on before. So, you, what we would do is say, okay, we have a reappointment, but we have three other people that are here. The person being reappointed is not here. Does anybody have any problem with what the, that person who was on the committee looking to be reappointed? Does anybody have anything against or for in their favor? So, then if you did, if you say, well, I don't think they did a good job, okay, so now, we all heard that. Now, we hear the new people that are applying, then when we have to make a decision, at least we know.
That's if they're not present for an interview.
Yeah, but a reappointment doesn't have to be present.
Yeah, but some of them do come.
They do, but some of them don't. Because.
Oh, alright.
And that's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying to cover, if they don't show up.
And now I'm even confused.
Yeah, I'm confused.
Now I'm confused.
I thought that was if they don't come before us.
I think everyone should have to come.
You're suggesting everybody comes for an interview.
Yeah, because some new people don't even, may not even know the reappointment.
Right.
Like, there's people, I've been here a while now and there's people that are on these committees. I don't really know that, well, I'd like to talk to them.
Well, I, yes, but if you look at what we just did.
We just did reappointments, neither people were reappointed that didn't come.
Who weren't here.
And we reappointed them.
But they were the only ones applying, that's different. No, in my opinion, that's different. We've advertised and only they showed up.
Yeah.
And they were here in the audience.
No, they weren't.
Stu Hardy was right there.
Stu's there, but I'm not.
Jim Mauer wasn't here.
No, you're right, Jim wasn't.
I'm just, I'm not pointing fingers at him, I'm just saying, you know, sometimes we have appointments where the people don't come, they're just being reappointed.
Mr. President?
So, but that's something, you know, if you have any, this is just a draft, anybody can make changes or. We're just trying to do something where we have a consistent policy that we can all go by.
I'm concerned that we're sort of handicapping our ability to be flexible with some of these reappointments and it feels overly bureaucratic, the way it's being structured.
So.
That's just my thought.
So, let me, let me clarify with an example, because now that I've read this, I can see why it's confusing. The, the May party committee, we'll just make up a committee. The May party committee has one opening and three people are applying for it. One is a person who would be reappointed, they're already on, they've been on the committee. And then there are two new people. This is nothing about the reappointed, the person who wants to be reappointed, again, it says in here that interviews are recommended but not required. Because we don't require everybody who wants to get reappointed to show up, so it's recommended. The council can decide, well, this person didn't come for their interview, maybe it's not that important to them, I don't know. But the idea was that, and, you know, we've seen this happen in the past. There's a person who's served. They may or may not be reappointed, but in light of their existing service, the president would ask first, do they have a nomination for a reappointment? In other words, and maybe nobody makes one, but it's a.
But then, once they do that, then that person's appointed and the others, the people don't.
You would ask, do you, no.
Why though, why would we have to?
You would ask, is there any, do we, do I have a nomination? It's, if you're a person and you've served and you're not gonna be reappointed and you come and you sit in this room, right? And, and you've, you've been a, you don't think that, you think you've been a good volunteer and you've done these things and you come and you sit in this room and the way that you don't get reappointed is not that you didn't get an up or down vote or the council got asked, other people just got appointed instead of you. It's, and if everybody's okay with it, then we're okay with it. It just seemed like somebody who's served is entitled to a little more respectful treatment. That was our thought, maybe not.
Madam President?
Joan?
Playing devil's advocate. I look to new people coming in to apply for position and they just come and say, oh, well, there's a reappointment, I'll never get the job, I'll never be appointed to that committee. So, that's why we put in safeguards in here to say, okay, three consecutive terms. Because we wanted to get that, the person who's coming in first time and say, I'd like to go on that committee. It's not disrespecting the person who's been on it and reappointed and reappointed and reappointed, it's to give everybody the same opportunity. So, that's why, if there's only one reappointment, there's only one position, that's the only person who's come in, then it makes it pretty straightforward. We don't have any new candidates for that, that position. But we wanted to leave it open to say, yeah, you know, we've, we've got to have some turnover sometime to get new ideas.
And I don't think it's an insult at all, it's just, we want new ideas.
It's trying to be fair to people that are being reappointed and also being fair to people who want to step up to the plate and be considered as a candidate for that, that, that border commission. So, that, it's a, it's a fine line here and that's why we have struggled with this before. And that's why we put in, again, the three-year thing, but we gave us a way out to say, but if they have a special skill set, when we had the wastewater management, there was certain skill sets that we needed for that board. So, if they had the background, the experience, we have, you know, we would, we would do that. There's also some other boards and commissions where you have to take a person from the general public, you have to take the specific requirements around that particular opening. And I can't remember what commission that is, but it has to be one from.
Casino.
Casino. I think it had to do with some construction or, it was, there was parameters around it.
Police pension boards, one, two.
Police pension. We don't really listen to this though, Joan, do we? General term limit, all of three consecutive terms? There's many people that have been on boards.
Right, but that's why we, it may not apply because the town council has looked at the experience and said, okay, we still need that person on there. So, but by, by putting in the three consecutive terms, we also said, okay, if it's. So, but by, by putting in the three consecutive terms, we also said, okay, if it's, if it's, if there's three more qual, you know, qualified candidates, then, then it's not a shoo-in, it's not a, it's to give those candidates a shot, because it, instead of coming up and saying, oh, well, the reappointment is always going to get it, so I'm never going to volunteer.
So, so should we take that language about the reappointments out, then? Does every, that, that's okay?
I know what you're saying, but it really...
It's all right, I mean, if people, if people aren't comfortable with it, I mean, we were...
Everybody can take home, look it over, and make suggestions. I mean, we're just trying to get something...
Oh, I think it's wonderful what you've done, it's just, that one I didn't understand. I'm still not sure I do.
So, Madam President?
Yes.
Just, John, can you explain, not the part about, not the part about, you know, bureaucratic, but what was the thing specific that you were reacting to?
The entire proposed reappointment versus new appointment process is, it seems like, it seems like we're putting ourselves into a box and saying, we are going to do it this way, and we're going to put 25 steps in between here and the end goal, when you used to take a shortcut and go right to the end. And that, that to me seems counterproductive, you know, for the purposes of this council, especially with all the dumb boards and the continuous amount of reappointments that we've got coming up. I mean, it also seems like we're deviating from these, you know, the fixed schedule of, you know, boards we, you know, we reappoint in these three months, not now and now it's going to be an ongoing basis and we have to, you know, pick a date, and it's just, it seems like we're overly complicating the process, which should be just pretty straightforward. Hey, you want to volunteer? Submit an application. You and whoever else comes in will consider you, and then we'll, we'll make our appointments. I mean, it shouldn't be overly complex with a lot of rules around it.
Any other comments? Trish hasn't done, though, so...
You just write that, you write the provided, that whole thing, it was just...
Well, do we have to, I'm thinking in my mind, do we really have to vote on this tonight, or could we rethink this, like, go over it now?
We don't, no.
And then we'll put it on the next agenda, after people have thought about it a little while, does that sound? Because I need to think about that before I vote. Like, I know what you're saying, and I'm just wondering how we could do that a different way.
And maybe, and maybe there is...
So maybe we can just go over it, and then we'll put it on the agenda in two weeks after everyone's kind of taken it home.
Okay.
All right.
And, and...
Go ahead.
Do you, would you like Joe and I to produce sort of a, another copy of this with the comments of the, you know, that have been made so far for the next one, or no?
It's up to you, if you want to volunteer and do that, that would be wonderful.
We can do that.
All right.
Madam President?
Yes, Joan?
I just have a couple more comments. Under E, should we, we're now requiring an ethics form to be completed, should that be included in, at the end?
Send it to the applications.
So that might, we might need to...
We should put that in here with...
Because the last, the last sentence in G refers to ethics commission requirements, and we might be able to say that, you know, complete the form that's provided.
Okay.
Go back, let me check, too.
And $300.
We don't look at, look at Nancy, she's giving you a look right now. Anything, go ahead, Joan.
As far as the public notice, I can sympathize with Nancy, we've, we've flip-flopped back and forth where we put a date in, we tried that for a while, then we flipped it, put no date in, and just accepted it until, you know, the agenda was set for the next meeting. We have struggled with this issue for many years. The reason why we didn't want to put a date in there is because of the advertising costs. So there's budgetary considerations versus being more specific and putting in a date for, for applications. Then my, my last comment, I think, refers to board meetings. Part of the reason why, that's on page three, part of the reason why we had three consecutive meetings, because three consecutive meetings can be three months. It could be, if you move it to seven to eight meetings, it could be eight months, and that committee could be having a problem, having a quorum. We see this a lot. And that was part of the reason why, that if it was consecutive, it meant that they were not committed. But if you have missed three meetings over the course of the year, then that's fine. We understand, you know, life happens. But if it was three consecutive meetings, we kind of made the assumption that they were not committed to the committee. And it gave a specific parameter to the board chairs to say, yes. It was very straightforward, three consecutive, they're not there, and I have a, especially if they have a problem with the quorum, they would be in here and saying, we need to do something about it. Not that we've had many boards, chairmans come in here to exercise this option, but it was there to say, it gave them a quick and dirty, if it's three consecutive, then we know they're not committed, and move on. Whereas if, if you give them seven to eight over the course of the year, then they now have to keep track of the members of the committee that are there or not there at a particular meeting. So that's just my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Yep.
Just to clarify for Counselor Shavit, that, and this is where, this is a little confusing, that whole 66 and two-thirds thing, that comes from the charter.
Yes.
So, you know, and, and it's different than the three meetings in a row, but that actually is in the charter, is the language that, that is in this thing. So that might be something that needs to get addressed by charter, but that rule comes from the, from the charter.
Actually, this is a, the provision now is an either-or. It's, you miss two-thirds, that's the annual, but if you miss three in a row...
In a row, right.
So that could have been, you know, instead of missing your, your eight meetings, if you miss three in a row, that's the second way you get done.
Was that for volunteers, or is that for elected?
Volunteers. Volunteers. Okay.
We've, we've never thrown anybody off a meeting ever, out of a, everybody who comes who's been trying to get re-elected or...
Yeah, I know, it's just a guideline.
I've never seen it, it's in a year already. Everybody gets reappointed, so why even bother? Just some, oh, yeah, there you go. You try to get rid of somebody and you can't.
I think in the past, what I remember is, like, someone has missed a lot of meetings, the chair has talked to them and said, look, you've missed four in a row, I need members, and the person has resigned before anyone has gotten rid of them. Usually you can talk to the person and say, look, we're having a problem with the quorum, and either you're coming or you don't, are you still interested?
You know, 99% of the people who do these committees are fine, they're great people, they got volunteers.
Yeah, very seldom do we have, right, any of that.
No, you don't have a problem with it.
But usually the chairman of the committee knows the committee members, and they can talk to the person, and the person may say, look, you're right, I have too many applications. And it's done very nicely in the person.
So now, when you, so now let me ask you this, when you get a letter from the chairman of a committee recommending the reappointment of somebody, and you have three other people that are applying, what do you do then?
Well, that letter needs to be read out loud.
Well, and that's, and that's one of the reasons why we put that in there, where you get a, you get a chairman from a committee who sends a letter of recommendation for someone, and you have three other people going for that position, what do you do then?
You still interview those three people, and you weigh, and that letter of recommendation is weighed because, because of it, but the chairman...
That was one of the reasons why we discussed that.
Oh, because the chairman also doesn't know who the other three are also. So to be fair, the chairman is recommending that person, but the other three have a right to tell us why they want to...
Well, I'm not saying that, that was one of the reasons why we discussed that and that got in there, was if somebody recommends a committee, what do you do? You ignore that chairman's recommendation?
No, 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 you, you weigh it.
So, and that's what, that was what the intent was of that, was...
Madam President? Sorry.
Joan, go ahead, Joan, Joan, you're right.
And then, you know, we do tend to ask the applicants whether they have gone to any meetings, have they talked to the chair, so that, you know, we could judge their, their interest, you know?
Yeah, that's not what I was getting at.
Yep.
I just want to counter to Counselor Perry's statement about the letter of recommendation from a chair. I mean, just because the chair of an organization or a board, you know, writes a letter of recommendation to reappoint somebody, doesn't necessarily mean that that particular chair is somebody we want to continue to serve in addition to that. I mean, I'm just, I'm saying, you play the devil's advocate side.
And that's not what I was saying, but I mean, I can remember going back a few months, we had letters of recommendation from taxpayers saying, I recommend this person for a position. We had, I don't know, it was a stack of them, and I just, I said, like Randy, throw in the shredder, because they don't mean anything, you know, unless they come before us. And that's, when we sat down and were going over this, that's what we were talking about, that what do you do? You get letters from people recommending, you know, what do you do? You say, we're going to go with this person rather than somebody who's been on the board for two or three terms?
I mean...
And that's what the intent was when we sat down and went over that, was try to come up with a policy that we could all agree on that would work for everybody.
What I, what I would say to that is, I mean, we're all elected by our constituency, and if you're getting inundated by your constituency to support somebody, I mean, it's, at that point, maybe it's a discussion you have to have with yourself politically, if you think you're going to continue to serve and represent the people, if you go forward and don't represent their views on the council. I mean, ultimately, we're, we're elected employees of the town, and so...
And some of those we didn't.
Well, what I'm saying to you is that if...
But you as an individual, do what you thought was right.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Right, right.
All right, so what we'll do is we'll, we'll bring this back for the next meeting. Everybody think a little bit about it, I'm going to think about that wording, and we'll, we'll put it on the next agenda, is that okay? Counselor Hilton and Counselor Perry?
We'll get a copy with the edits on it, and we'll, we'll bring it back.
Thank you. No financial business, no new business, business requests, none, town administrative, five-year plan.
Yeah, two quick announcements. One, the five-year plan has been updated, it's on the website, you see, there's no backup copy here to save some paper. The only change, the additions were the police five-year plan and the IT five-year plan. And so it'll be continually updated, there's just a couple that are outstanding. And secondly, the trunk or treat is this Saturday, rain date is Sunday, from, I guess, 5:45 to 7:00 at the library.
And last year was a huge success, so we encourage everybody to either come to it or open up your trunk, because we did, and we had fun last year, so...
So far, we have 36.
Yeah, and I didn't put my card yet, I just thought of it.
We got a lot last year that pulled up at the last minute.
We got a point he had, if somebody needs it.
All right, I'll use it. Council announcements, any council announcements?
I have council announcements. Go ahead. In case anybody wants to do any gardening on Saturday, the Grinnell's Beach Committee is going to be planting beach roses in one section of the, of the plan that, that we can plant now in the fall, and it's a good time, we're supposed to get some rain this week, so Wenley Ferguson is coming over from Save the Bay, and I don't need a bazillion volunteers, but if anybody wants to, let me know, and I'll put you on the volunteer list. To be determined, it'll be Saturday morning, though, which I know will be before trunk or treat, but...
We have a comprehensive plan that they don't...
No, that was canceled.
Thanks for telling.
Well, you, you weren't here. We probably should have told you.
Those are the last...
So if anyone wants to volunteer, they can shoot me an email, and I'll get an email out with the date and a time.
Counselor Shavit?
Yes, just want to, since the next council meeting is ways away, the senior center knitters and quilters are having their next event at the Brookdale at Secconic Manor on November 4th and 5th, I believe it's from 9:00 to 3:00. So they have wonderful knitted and quilted items. It's, it's a very good opportunity to support them on getting funds to support scholarships, I think the Star Kids Scholarship. So please attend, they have wonderful stuff. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other council has an announcement? Town solicitor, town clerk, closed executive session, Counsel Edwards.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to go on a closed executive session. Brian James, open space, 4246-5A5, acquisition of real property.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
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 And continuing in closed executive session, town solicitor, potential litigation, 4246-5A2, McLaughlin v. Tiberton, SU17156A.
Second, second.
Counselor Perry?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
We're now in executive session, I'm taking like a...